I'd like to call the meeting of March 11th, 2019. With agenda, first thing we'll do is invocation and pledge of allegiance. But before we start, Dave Harden had a work tonight, and I just want to let everybody know that's why he's not here, okay?
Good evening, everyone. Oh heavenly spirits, please bless these proceedings and give us the knowledge to be affect- to effectively represent and guide our community. Bless all our citizens who need assistance and guide them to solutions. With your leadership, may we prosper and achieve the best of our abilities. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to get a motion to approve the minutes of the February 11th meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Kadim, seconded by Mr. Pia. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes nine zero. Now we'd like the family of the Bud Russell family to come forward to the front here. For those who don't know, Bud Russell was coach for, looks like thirty, twenty years for baseball. And I was just telling everybody, I remember when I was a freshman in high school back in sixty-eight, he had just started, and I noticed, I was right, sixty-nine was his first year, which would have been the spring. So anyhow, I'm going to read this. Coach Russell, Coach Russell home team dugout at Pendlesfield. We're going to be doing a secondary honor with him and put it on the dugout. In honor of Alvin Bud Russell, a man of character, class, and dignity, in recognition of his devoted service to Stratford High School and its student athletes, physical education teacher for thirty-seven years at Johnson High School and Stratford High School, Stratford High School baseball coach nineteen sixty-nine to nineteen eighty-nine, twenty-one seasons, overall record two-hundred-and-fifty-two wins, one-hundred-and-sixty losses, two league titles, seventeen state tournament appearances. He was also the Stratford High head soccer coach from nineteen seventy-four to nineteen eighty-four, eleven seasons, overall record hundred wins, fifty-two losses, and nineteen ties, two league titles, eight state tournament appearances. He did his thing, his way, and he did it the right way. So we'd like to recognize Coach Russell now. Number four is the mayor's report. I'll turn it over to Mayor Hoydic.
Thank you, thank you, council chair. I just want to comment too, I know the Russell family is gone, but Bud Russell was not only an exemplary coach and teacher, but he was an exemplary person. His integrity, his honesty, and, and just the way he comported himself and was a role model and a mentor for kids and adults is something that we should be very, very proud of. And I was happy to be at Stratford High when Coach Russell was there. Sue and I were our friends and went graduated high school together, and the Russell family is just one of those special families, and it came from Bud and Paula. So I just want to acknowledge how great a man he was, how great a family you are, and thank you for being such an important piece of Stratford's fabric. So, hey, it's March, it's budget season, so a large portion of what we've been doing this last month is, well, couple months, has been working on the budget, and we've been dedicated a lot of time that you will see as a result of what has been transmitted to you this evening. Staff and department heads have worked to help us present to you a budget that builds on the work we began last year in achieving savings and efficiencies in the operation of the town budget and town government. Last year, we managed a modest tax reduction for town residents and then the cycle of increases for our residents that had endured for the prior years. I'm pleased to present a no-tax increase budget to you this evening that continues to build on our efforts from last year to provide a leaner and more responsive government for our taxpayers. We continue to face the challenges from statewide economic conditions and the state government policies. Last year, as you recall, we had to absorb significant recisions from the last governor, which cut deeply into our town and education funding. We are hopeful that our new governor means on a new working dynamic, but challenges still remain. This proposed budget includes assumptions that are based off of Governor Led LeMans' proposed budget to the state, a budget that gives to Stratford, but it also takes away. Some aid figures are increased, but we are asked to foot the bill for progressively larger portions of the state's obligations to teacher retirement costs. I'm pleased that last year, we began a mutually beneficial and respectful relationship with the council as we deliberated the budget. We have partnered in a bipartisan effort to produce the best budget product we can for our residents, and as we begin our work and you begin to work with the staff, we remain at your disposal to answer any questions that you may have and to work with you on ideas that you have that might make our government better. I look forward to working with all of you and as we look to deliver the final budget by the charter deadline of May twelfth. I also would like to announce that Kristin Bedell is before you this evening as a nomination for the Short Beach Commission. Last month's events, we had Shakespeare Task Force had their organizational meeting on February thirteenth. It is on YouTube if anybody wants to look at it. On February fifteenth, I spoke to the Stratford Men's Senior Club. I've attended a celebration of Joshua Lisi. He's a Benel High School student, and he received the Voice of Democracy Award. Josh won the local award and was the state's first runner-up. We had a ribbon cutting and a great breakfast at Sadie's Place Diner on February twenty-second. On February twenty-seventh, I attended the Police Department's Promotion and Retirement Ceremony, and we have three retiring officers, Lieutenant Celeste Robitaille after twenty-five years, Lieutenant David Gugliotti twenty-five years, and Officer Bob Joy twenty-five years. Our thanks are extended to Howard Aspenwall of Milla Monkey for hosting Stratford Sip and Shop to benefit the Stratford Fuel Bank. Last week, Mary Dean and I met with Deep Commissioner Katie Dykes and DECD Deputy Commissioner David Kors on the Stratford Army Engine Plant and the progress to move forward, working with the federal government as well as the developer and the army. We also met with Lieutenant Susan Baisowitz, Lieutenant Governor Susan Baisowitz. She's serving as Governor LeMans' liaison for towns and cities, and we were pleased to have her visit us here and to share some open lines of communication. Many of us experienced the ribbon cutting at Area Two Facility at Two Roads, which was really kind of cool, can't wait till everybody sees it. And last week on Thursday, Chris Pia, State Rep Joe Gresko, Mary Dean, Mike Downs, Chris Timniak, and I attended our first Skorsky Memorial Airport Master Planning Meeting. So just to give you a little update on what's happening, so Bridgeport has secured funds from the FAA to do a master plan revision of Skorsky Memorial Airport. They've hired a consultant, and it's very similar to what we do with the Plan of Conservation and Development. There will be a lot of community input. There is a website that's available, though not, though it's not very well populated, but by the end of the week, I will have something on the town website and out in the social media outlets that will allow you, that website URL, as well as what's happening to date. So this process will probably take between a year and eighteen months, so anyone who's interested in that particular project, you can stay attuned to it, and also when updates are made, they, if you get on the list, kind of like we do for the Shakespeare Property Committee, they'll email you the updates of what's happening. Upcoming events, so Friday is our St. Patrick's Day celebration, nine o'clock on the steps, if the weather is good, steps out front, where we, where I get to name the Irish mayor for a day. And we have the raising of the Irish flag and an Irish soda bar contest. On March eighteenth, there's the ribbon cutting for Craft and Sprout, which is Stratford's own tiny houses, they're off-axis roads, really very cool. The BRBC is sponsoring a state of town address to the business community on March, I'm sorry, what? Yeah, March twenty-seventh at noon at Orno Country Club. Bag Leaf Collection begins April first, and that's every two weeks along with your recycling schedule. Gunther Long Beach West Dedication Ceremony will be held on Monday, April first at ten a.m., and this, the members of former Doc Gunther's family will be on hand for the dedication. I'm sure if you go, go down Oak Gloves, you'll see the sign. That's what we're officially having the ceremony for. Restaurant Week is the twenty-eighth of April through May fourth, and the next Shakespeare Property Task Force meeting is March eighteenth at seven-thirty at the Bird's Eye Municipal
Thank you, Mayor. Now I'll open up for any questions from the council for the mayor. Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Chairman. Ms. Hoydic, thank you. Through increased efficiencies, cost savings, and having a more effective workforce, we will achieve a leaner and more responsible town government, so thank you for taking us in that direction. At the public hearing, one member of the community, you explained the airport improvement project. Could you give a little more substance to the Army Engine Plant progress?
So the Army Engine Plant, I don't want to say dilemma, but cause of delays is the communication and effective agreement between the developer and the army. The developer wants, the army wants to take some of the contaminated fill from the title flats, and once it's cleaned, wants to deposit it on the property. And the developer said, fine, but, you know, I, we want to be paid for that, and the army doesn't want to do it. So this is the quagmire we're in right now. Connecticut Deep has worked very well with us so far. Stratford is aligned with them on the title flat remediation and the upland remediation. Deep is really in charge of the water, you can say, and the EPA is in charge of the land. So we are now working to move that log jam a little bit. Three weeks ago, I met with Congresswoman DeLoro about it. I've been in touch with the governor's office, and we're trying to bring these groups together so we can effectively come to a compromise on this approximately twenty-million-dollar
Councilman Kadim?
Thank you, through the chair. Hello, Yana, how are you today? All right, I just want to say firstly, thank you for yourself and your staff, the council coming down to the meeting I had at Bird's Eye Complex in regard to the splash park. All the information was very necessary, very important. It was so good to see that you guys got so involved and took the time out to make so many different options, it's really, it was incredible. I just want to say thank you for that firstly. Also, a few things that are happening with the budget, I really like what I'm seeing, so thank you guys for working hard to try to gear, gear the town towards a better handling of the money also. The staff that you have and the people that are working in the town are more efficient now, especially with the garbage cans being compressed on their own, and you don't have to waste time running out to a garbage can, you can go when it's full, so that really makes a, saves a lot of manpower. So I just want to say thank you for all of those things, and keep up the good work, and thank you. Oh, one more thing, excuse me. You answered a couple of questions already, Mr. Khan already asked you, but the Shakespeare, I know they had their meeting, you said that's coming up this month, correct? So there was no plans put in place yet, just, just coming from a constituent, any plans put in place yet?
So the, the plans are the March eighteenth is the next meeting, and then they have two charrettes scheduled, March eighteenth is at Bird's Eye, and then they have two charrettes scheduled or community listening sessions or interactive sessions in April, I think the twenty-first and the twenty-fourth, maybe?
Thank you very much. And also, a lot of people always ask me about this, because I've been doing this for so long, while, Kadim, classic, to help the Children's Foundation, the, the new head of the, let me get this right, I don't want to mess it up, the new head of the parking wreck, she's been very helpful, I thank you for that as well, and it's really, really a great thing to be able to work with children. A lot of them, for the first time, never played basketball, and I'm so thankful that God allowed me to teach them in a way that they can enjoy it and embrace it, you know, without too much pressure. So you guys are part of that as well, I just want to say thank you. This is like twenty-ninth year or twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth year now, so thank you, thank God, thank you so much, and just keep it up, you know, like, we're starting April tenth for the first grade through sixth grade, come down, have fun, get a T-shirt. Seventh grade through twelfth grade will be starting on the twelfth, that Friday, so, you know, you guys, it's open to everyone, come on down, have some fun, learn a couple of things. A lot, a lot of times, a lot of parents come to me after I do a little session, they say, I didn't know all of that, thank you very much, you know, because a lot of times when you teach basketball, a lot of times they don't teach the rules as well. So me, being a ref for over thirty years, also teaching basketball for over thirty years, I'm able to give them both sides of it. So thank you so much, and God bless all of you.
Well, councilman, you have ten players right here, you could probably have a little scrimmage before the, the first practice.
I would love that. You guys come on through, throw some T-shirts, want to have some fun. Funny you said that, because Sterling House just had something the other night, I was there reffing their game with the coaches and the, and the, coaches and players, right?
Coaches and refs.
Yeah, coaches and refs. So I reffed the game, and they had fun, my son even played, so it was incredible. I love stuff like that. Thank you so much again, and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Kadim. Anybody else? Mr. Pia.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Chair. To the mayor, I just wanted to say publicly, thank you for advocating for myself to be placed on, on the task force for the Skorsky Memorial Airport. As it is a Bridgeport decision, it was derived through Bridgeport. You mentioned that we, we made that meeting this past Thursday, and I just wanted to thank you for that, and also just acknowledge that, because a lot of people who have, in my district and the first district, have obviously inquired, being that the airport is there, there will be a public forum that was promised by the airport going through this process, and I will work with you, obviously, to get that out to the town so everyone can know, but I want to thank you. And then just publicly, because we don't get to publicly thank a lot of the great things that are happening in this town, I just want to personally thank Lieutenant, Lieutenant Eller of the Police Department and Sergeant Lofton, as well as Patrolman, or Sergeant Jose Diaz, I'm sorry, Jose, if I got your rank wrong, through PAL. But for the people of Stratford to know, I was, I was able and fortunate enough to, to sit in on the PEP program, which stands for the Police Engagement Program, which is run through PAL, and it goes into our school systems, and it allows our kids to actually sit in the shoes of a police officer when that police officer's approaching a vehicle or making a domestic call, and really understand the life or death situation that can happen in the blink of an eye. And it was amazing witnessing in an hour and a half how some of our youth just saw exactly what they see on the other side of it, and it really turned their heads. So we have an amazing thing, and the PAL program's doing awesome stuff in our school system, and I wanted to thank those officers publicly.
Are there any other questions for the mayor? Mr. O'Brien?
First, I'd like to publicly congratulate our sixth district Councilman Ken Poison, who was selected as the Teacher of the Year, Month, for the month of February. Did I get that correct? News travels fast in this town. And I also want to say some thanks to Chief of Staff Mike Downs, who is so helpful in resolving constituent issues, to Margot, who has to put up with a lot of sometimes nasty and rude telephone calls on our behalf, and I appreciate it, I hope everybody does. And I have to admit, Rich Fredette is a friend, but I, he does a great job as a blight officer. He shares my passion that you all know about, about illegal signs and sign pollution, and if you look around town, I ask you, look as you drive around town, and look as you drive around other towns, and Stratford is way above as far as neatness and litter-free of signs, and great job, Rich, if you're here. And I had the pleasure of working with him for a short time and came to appreciate his work ethic, and I did have one question, I wanted to, wondering about the splash park survey, splash park after that meeting, would we consider doing a survey of the neighbors? A bigger survey, because the actual number of people at the public hearing weren't, it wasn't a great number. I'd like to get a better feel for the people that live there.
So there are a couple more opportunities for a public hearing. One, when the Community Development Block Grant comes before the council for a vote, that's an opportunity for a public forum. Also, there's an eight-twenty-four review by the Planning Commission, I believe that is March nineteenth. That's another opportunity for a public forum. And we can put, we can put a survey online, but it's getting the word out to people to participate in it. So it is a possibility. I was, I understand where you're coming from, though sixteen-hundred flyers were distributed and twenty people kind of came, and that was, it was kind of a small showing, and I think that we're gonna, we may, we may have to regroup and think about this, not just the location of Juliet Low versus Johnson, but, you know, we still have to go to the school district, the school board, to approve that use of that property as well. So we, we've got a couple more hurdles to go, and so more input, I think, would be better.
Any other final questions for the mayor?
Through the chair, just a little bit on that, both are so right, both of you are so right, because a lot of people couldn't make it out that night, and most of the people that was there, everybody wanted Johnson House, and it's interesting, because it's been a long time coming, I'm so glad that everybody's involved, it really makes a difference to have you at the top spearheading it as well, so that, I mean, it makes a difference. Instead of all of us just trying to pull from the bottom, from the top, we all come together. So I'm really happy about that, and it is a good idea to even have it go, like you said, through the Board of Ed, send a survey, like you said, emails through the Board of Ed to the parents and see what they think of it, and that's very, I mean, that, that would show a whole, a whole lot of input, a lot of goodness, so I really appreciate everyone that's involved in this. I want to say thank you again to your staff, as well as all the people that worked years and years on this, this splash park idea, and you guys have been great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kadim. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so on four-point-three-point-one-point-one, is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to first of all thank Counselor Pia for taking over the ordinance committee meeting on February twenty-fifth in my absence. And on item four-point-three-point-one-point-one, I move to approve the ordinance amending section one-five-two-dash-two-eight and one-five-two-dash-two-nine of the town code, which is the dog-off-leash ordinance, and I'd like to have it resolved that the second reading of the above ordinance be dispensed with as copies have been received by all council members, and that the same be approved and adopted as a second reading, and this ordinance would be approved effective thirty days from passage.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Pia. Is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Khan?
Thank.
I'm sorry.
Not a con, man.
You get me, you get me nervous up here, right, because I know you're going to enlighten us.
Just for the public record, this ordinance has to do with leash laws and the dog park and just trying to bring it in to current, trying to make it more updated and current. Thank you.
Is there any other comments? If not, I will call to vote by roll call, starting with Mrs. Dantcho.
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes nine zero. Four-point-three-point-one-point-two, is there anyone to make a motion?
Make a motion, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve four-point-three-point-one-point-two in ordinance amending sections one-thirty-three-dash-one, one-thirty-three-dash-two, one-thirty-three-dash-fourteen, one-thirty-three-dash-fifteen, one-thirty-three-dash-sixteen, and one-eighty-two-dash-one, one-eighty-two-dash-two, one-eighty-two-dash-three, one-eighty-two-dash-four, one-eighty-two-dash-thirteen of the town code with the pages, with pages appended as pages ten dash twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Dantcho. Is there any discussion? Yes.
Thank you, Chairman. Again, just for the public's information, that these ordinances generally have to do with updating the rules around littering and the handling of waste for the town.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? If not, Mr. Pia.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Just want to say thank you to the town attorneys on working on this. We've been working on this ordinance for a number of months now to update, to Mr. Khan's point, this was an update of a current ordinance with a focus on some enforcement items, some penalties and fines, as well as updating the litter column, as many of us have discussed in the past, with handbills, commercial handbills being thrown on the street, many of which many residents in town do not even look forward to having, and then becoming an environmental hazard and waste and getting caught in the sewer drains, as well as other things, and also from a security standpoint. So just want to thank everybody, this was great work all around as a town.
If there's no other questions, I'll call to roll call vote, starting with Mr. Pia.
Aye.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes nine zero. Next item, four-point-three-point-two.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve four-point-three-point-two, A, B, C, and D. These are credits for the Stratford High renovation project.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kadim. Is there any discussion on this? If not, we'll call to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes Tom's, nine zero. Next, we have the town attorney's report.
We have no report, Sead.
No report. Moving down to ordinance six-point-one-point-one.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to amend the section six-point-one-one of the town code. I'd like to have this referred to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
There's a, second by Mr. Ticky. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes 9-0. 6.1.2.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to have this ordinance establishing fines for violations of Chapter 217 of the Town Code. Refer to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Ticky. Any discussion? If not, we'll call to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes 9-0. 6.1.3.
6.1.3, I make a motion to refer this ordinance to the ordinance committee for a public hearing. And this is amending section 113-5 of the Town Code, which is the establishment of groundwater zones.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kadim. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes 9-0. 6.1.4.
And again, Mr. Chairman, on 6.1.4, which is an ordinance increasing the capital improvements and equipment program for fiscal year 2018-19 in the amount of $2,060,000 for various public improvements. I'd like to refer this to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Ticky. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes 9-0. 6.1.5. Is there a motion?
Make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve 6.1.5 in ordinance authorizing the issuance of $2,060,000 of bonds with the town for the roof replacement of Stratford Academy, Johnson House, the classroom reservations, renovations at Chapel School, impending issuance thereof, and making the temporary borrowings for such purpose.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Dantcho.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is that, was that a motion to refer to the ordinance committee?
Yes.
I'd like to amend my motion to, amended to, per the town attorney's request, sending it to the ordinance.
Motion amended. Second.
I'll second it.
Second by Mrs. Dantcho. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes 9-0. 6.1.6.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Like to make a motion to approve 6.1.6 in ordinance adopting the annual operating budget for the town of Stratford for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020, and appropriating the sum of $228,215,459 in accordance therewith.
There's a motion on the floor. Second by Mr. Ticky. Is there any discussion on this? If not, we'll call to vote. All, yes, Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Chairman. Just for the public record, you know, this is being referred to the ordinance committee. There'll be a number of public hearings, what we call budget workshops. Their dates are on the town website. I just encourage everyone to review the budget, escalate your questions to your councilperson, and everyone's welcome to attend the budget workshops.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Now, we'll call to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes 9-0. The next one, 6.1.7. Is there a motion? Mr. Perillo. There's a motion. Is there a second on the floor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kadim. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes 9-0. Next item is new business. 7.1. Mrs. Dantcho, can you give a little?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As chairperson of the ordinance committee, I am happy to announce two public hearing sessions that we will have for the next fiscal year budget. The first one will be on April 22nd at 7:00 p.m. here in council chambers. It'll be the public hearing portion of the regular ordinance meeting. And that will be continued to the next day, Tuesday, April 23rd at 7:00 p.m., and that'll be held in the Benel High School gym. Both of these meetings will be published in the newspaper for everyone to please
Clarification, auditorium or the gym? Auditorium?
Oh, it's going to be in the auditorium, yes. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mrs. Dantcho. 7.2, Mr. Bill O'Brien.
I'd like to make a motion that the license agreement with the Stratford Little League be, and it is hereby approved.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Kadim. Is there any discussion on this? If not, we'll call to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes 9-0. Mr. Ticky, can you help us with 7.3?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Stratford Health Department fee schedule for 2019.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kadim. Any discussion on this? If not, we'll call to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes 9-0. 7.3.1.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Like to make a motion to approve, as per nominated by the mayor previously, be resolved that for the Short Beach Commission, a three-year term, that Kristin Bedell, nominated by the mayor, is a member of the Short Beach Park Commission, to expire its seat of Patricia Clark Spurling, with a term to expire January 2nd, 2022, be in hereby confirmed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kadim. Is there any discussion? If not, call to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes 9-0. 7.3.2. Mr. Perillo.
Helen McQuilton, Chris Mancini, Shawn Campbell, Ryan Cardamas, and Ralph Arone.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Ticky. Is there any discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman, that's actually a motion to confirm, just for clarification.
Oh, a motion to confirm. So, Mr. Perillo, can you restate that? Motion to confirm?
I'd like to make a motion to reconfirm on a two-year term Helen McQuilton, Chris Mancini, Shawn Campbell, Ryan Cardamas, and Ralph Arone.
The second was from Mr. Ticky. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes 9-0. We're going down to, actually, the last item, 7.3.1. Mr. Pia, can you help us?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve seven, to appoint 7.3, excuse me, to approve 7.3.10 zoning commission alternate member to a three-year term. Resolve that Lam Nguyen be hereby appointed an alternate member of the zoning commission to the expired seat of Ann Alice Baker, with a term to expire January 1st, 2022.
Second by Mr. Ticky. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes 9-0.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Who's second? Second by Mr. Kadim. All in favor?